Happy to be in the home stretch.
Thanks so much for being here and excited to talk about Boundless by Design. And we are just focusing on only the land use section tonight. So really grateful that our consultant is here, Logan Simpson. I'll turn the time over to you, Francisco, if you want to turn the time over.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. The only thing I want to share with you before we turn the time over to not take away from the consultant's time, what I wanted to share is page four on your packet.
The full packet or the?
This guy, the city council packet.
Oh.
Commission, I emailed it to you Thursday, somebody did, I think I did.
Yeah, I did.
I did. And the first part simply talks about the focus and we did have a shift in that we want to focus on land use today. But four tells us what we've done so far, the various steering committee meetings, the joint sessions with this group, the planning commission in city council, we've got the pop-out outreach events, we have the public open houses and the focus groups. And last but not least, we also have the community interviews. You were interviewed, I think everyone here must have been interviewed, the commission, the council, the steering committee, and then we had a whole bunch of other people that were selected to be interviewed. So just wanted to let you know that we've had a lot of ideas and this is why we hired the consultant, to help us put all those ideas in paper and this is where we're at. So we're very proud of you at this moment and hopefully soon we will get over the end goal. So that's all I wanted to say, just we've had a lot of events, a lot of opportunities to comment. The website's been up and running for over a year. We're giving information of signing up on the website to be able to provide comments while at the same time, I thought the website did a really good job into what is the general plan, what's different between that and zoning, and providing an educative aspect to it. So very proud of what we've done so far and we said we're going to focus on land use and would like to turn over the time over to Logan Simpson Design. We've got Joe Moss here and then we also have in the camera, we have Megan Moore who's here helping us out. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Francisco. So thanks, everybody, I'm sure you've got the draft and been reading through and we're anxious to hear your comments and feedback and things and so we're going to kind of take this into more manageable chunks and we're going to just focus on that land use component that we mentioned. So our agenda today is live. Really just reviewing that strategy, answering your questions, discussing that approach and kind of go through that and then we'll go through some next steps. Just as a reminder, we're here kind of right at the end of the process, reviewing the draft. But we wanted to go through this land use strategy and kind of how it's organized and talk about the components of the tools that are available in this draft that should hopefully work really well for you. So how we organize this, so there's character areas in the city which are basically just regions of the city and then you have place types within those character areas. So you can see that the character area map is filled in with a bunch of different colors. Those are all represented by place types. One of the things we've also given you is kind of some decision-making criteria that's going to talk about if a proposal comes in and maybe it's not aligned exactly with the color on the map, like hey, we're looking at this particular parcel that's envisioned to be, you know, community commercial, they're asking to build, you know, something primarily housing or something like that that might not necessarily be in line with that exact color. You have some decision-making criteria to really help fill in the, well, you know, is this going to be a good or bad thing based off of what we're looking for? So these criteria here, there's half and half, it's kind of a little bit more empirical at the bottom and a little more goal-focused at the top here. And it talks about, you know, is it going to help achieve the vision of the plan and the guiding principles? Is it in keeping with that? Is it advancing the character area's intent? Each of the character areas have an intent statement that you can read that to. Does it include compatible features with the future land use map? And does it protect the building natural amenities and infrastructure? Strength in connections to create two activity centers within and beyond the character area? Demonstrate that the project's travel demand estimates can be accompanied by the planned transportation network? Demonstrate that the lifecycle of the project, or demonstrate the project's demand to the public infrastructures accommodated by the planned facilities. It's not just transportation but also the utility component. And then demonstrating that it's going to be a financial benefit for the city in the long term and the short term because others, you don't want projects that are going to be negatively impacting the city that way. So there's a kind of list here of all these different items which are going to help groups like this make decisions about requests that come across their table. Do they align with what we're trying to do within these character areas and the place types of the future land use plan? So before I go any further, are there any questions on that kind of decision-making criteria or the general character area place type approach?
So is this decision-making criteria, is this going to be codified anywhere in like city policy or I mean, is this just kind of part of the general plan?
Yes.
And that's, that's the end of it?
So this would be part of the general plan and it would be adopted with it. So it would become city policy. So when you're looking at land use requests, you'd be checking it against this criteria to see if it's in alignment with it or not. And it can be really useful especially when you have things that, you know, maybe the plan didn't fully comprehend when, you know, maybe there's a project that's really unique and you're like trying to figure out, hey, does this really fit with, you know, what we're trying to do and the intent of the plan overall? You know, it allows for some flexibility that way.
Yeah, and I'm glad you used the word alignment in that through state requirements currently, general plans are not, they're advisory in nature.
Right.
And they're not binding and that's why the list is intended to find some sort of alignment. However, general plans, just like zone changes and even land use code tax amendments are legislative items and it falls under the purview of the legislative body for the ultimate decision. And again, they're currently advisory and they're, it wouldn't be necessarily binding in nature. But I think that the reason why the consultant put this is just to allow the planning commission, which would be required to make a recommendation to the city council in finding such compliance.
Right, I mean, the reason why this triggered, it's quite my question which triggers because I think about when we do like a conditionally used permit, you guys and your staff, you get your staff report analyzed, say here's the condition for a conditionally used permit. I was wondering, is this going to be the same thing now we have staff reports? Is this, is this used or is this proposal consistent with the general plan or are we going to see these types of criteria in your staff reports?
For compliance with the general plan, well, this criteria is intended for more, if I say, if I may say gray area determinations and from time to time there are unintended consequences and we cannot keep up with the changes in technology and the development pattern. So this, this is intended to allow a guide for alignment and I really like that word but it's not going to be, it's not going to be part of the vested right or the binding language for a conditionally used permit and other components. We would even say that say a conditionally used permit or any type of administrative type of application, it shouldn't have this compliant with the general plan because in nature, in nature, it simply needs to comply with the zoning code. That's it.
Right.
And for our purposes for today, I think if people have input on this, then that's great, but otherwise our focus should be on evaluating the different character areas and looking at the map and just seeing if you have any input when we're looking at those things today.
Making the required, this application of any sort building permits, CUP, site plan, complies with the general plan is too vague of a statement in that it would be up for interpretation and even though this list, it's intended to be aligned, it's not specific criteria. It's not yes or no. It's more of, does it follow this, this type of theme, type of approach?
Wouldn't that be the next step after this is adopted? To codify and move into the ordinances?
Yeah, look at ordinance, amend our code.
Right.
Yeah.
So they're unified.
Yeah, this is really just intended to give you a tool that you can use to make, yeah, to give you some additional guidance for when you do come across those decisions where you're like, could it align or could it not? These are some things you can look at to say, okay, we can, we can determine it meets, you know, six out of eight things, you know, so we think that it mostly aligns or, you know, something like, like that. It's just meant to be an additional tool to help you make consistent decisions that are going to help achieve the vision of the plan.
On that, you could make it binding or you can try. I highly do not recommend it in that we're going to get in trouble in finding a different interpretation or idea. I've seen it done in some other cities and it gets quite messy. Let's leave the administrative items simply complying with the zoning code and then the zoning code, once we get to it, as council member Bell indicated, we can find that compliance with the plan itself and then if there's any further dialogue to review, we take the list out. And that's what it's intended to do, just to help us find alignment.
So going forward from this point, because from what I've reviewed in anticipation of tonight's meeting, is that there are no, at this point, codified or suggested code changes and that, and that when we get to that point, can we just kind of have like a timeframe, so like from when? Because this is all, like you said, it's kind of aspirational language, it's advisory, but kind of getting from here to there, meaning there is the codified changes that kind of implement the vision? What, I would just love to know kind of like a timeframe as to when you would anticipate this or how this will look in the next.
I think, if you don't mind, I think that for our purposes for right now, over the next hour and a half, we really want to just spend our time focusing on these different character areas and these components, the descriptions and the key attributes. And if we spend our time doing that, then that will really help inform the process and looking at the maps. But we will definitely be getting into, after that, then we still have the whole rest of the, all of the other suggestions to mull through and all of the other, so those timelines, I think are to be determined. But right now, if you guys don't mind, let's get to where we're discussing the character, the areas.
Sure.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can roll into that and I know, yeah, we do have, there's a lot in the implementation, implementation chapter that we will cover that does talk a lot about that. For the meeting tonight, I did want to kind of give you an overview of the structure of these place types and different features that each one of them has. So we have some example images and those were chosen by the community at the open houses, the land use open houses earlier this year, is the ones that they thought sort of best represented those, those place types. So the biggest image is the number one favorite and then other ones were kind of other popular choices that people wanted. We also have a primary and supporting land use categorization, so you can see kind of what different land uses would be involved in each of those particular place types. And then we also gave you a generalized land use mix graphic, which is giving you an idea of kind of the amount of each of those place types that's maybe envisioned in those. So you can see what the mix would be, you know, are we talking a whole lot of parks or are we talking a little bit of parks, you know? So you can see what that looks like. And then each one has a description which talks about kind of the role it's playing in the future land use map and then the key attributes with kind of some of the key information about what that development pattern looks like. And then there's also a suggested density range for residential uses. So we also have this future land use map, or future land use matrix, which kind of also gives you an idea of what uses might be involved in each of those different place types. It gives you those primary and supporting, you know, land uses. So you can see that, hey, when we're talking the community commercial, obviously the more commercial, you know, place types or commercial land uses are going to be the primary and anything else is more ancillary. And then there might be things that we're not necessarily considering in the community commercial and residential detached product. We're not seeing that as a potential use in that particular category. So this is again, just intended to provide more guidance on what is, you know, what types of uses you're going to be seeing in these different place types and what you would want to equip that with.
Are you going to walk us through each of the maps or is this like a time where we could go to one particular and maybe talk through it?
Yeah, let me, I'm going to run through the character areas and then the main map and then we can pop into each individual district real quick. But for the character areas, it's a similar breakdown. So you have the, the map of the actual character area, the, with the place types in it. You have the defining place types in that character area, so the ones that are most prevalent. We have the supporting place types, again, ones that are present but maybe not as prominent. And then you have your intent statement, which again, that's important because that plays back to the decision-making criteria. So you can kind of see what this district area, this, this whole region of the city, what is this sector, what, what role is it playing in the community essentially? And then we also have the description with the, you know, talking about what this area is, what it looks like, what it feels like. And then the development patterns, which point out the different place types and kind of what they do in the character area. And then we have some of the assets and focal points that folks have pointed out in the, this was from our open house public involvement. So people said, hey, what do we think is the, you know, focal point of this particular area of town? And they said, okay, you know, this one, it's Main Street, obviously, you know, it's hands down. And then they also identified some other assets. And then there's some supporting pictures of kind of what that looks like and give an idea of the.
So can I just ask, as we're going through, are you, are you leading us through and then as we talk about each, as we talk about each character area, then is that, is that the right time for us to kind of, everyone to kind of give their thoughts?
Yeah, let me, I'm going to hop into, I'll show you this map real quick and then we'll go through each place type and character area.
Sounds great, thank you.
And so that kind of all feeds into this main future land use map, which is intended to provide guidance on land use everywhere in the city. The current future land use map only really gives you any advice on, you know, primarily commercial areas. So there's not really any guidance on what happens everywhere else in the city. So we wanted to make sure that this map was giving you a guiding, you know, overview of where, where everything's going to be. So you can see kind of how the whole thing works together. So, you know, different types of place types and where they, they fit in. Generally you see more intense uses in areas where there's better access, infrastructure, transportation. And then the further toward the mountains you get, the more spread out things tend to become and you wind up getting more into that open space when you get up into the site. But for that, I'm going to hop into document here. How can I get this, to share this instead of the presentation? Oh, there you are. All right. So this was our first place type, whether it be parks, open space and civic uses. So one of the reasons we included civic with the parks and open spaces, we found that in Bountiful, a lot of people were utilizing schools and school playgrounds and things that are parks. So that's kind of fulfilling a recreational role in Bountiful and so we have looped those into this particular place type. And so you can see that it's generally civic, with an early open space, hopefully with some of the, and then, you know, some of the ancillary, the continuity. This is the only one without a suggested residential density range because it's not in a, a place type that people live in. Yes.
It would help out if you look at the screen, that's page 627 out of these packets. And then if you go to page 47, you'll see it citywide, where the parks, open space and civic areas are located. If you want to flip back and forth.
Good idea. Get page 47 out.
Page 47.
Yeah.
Sorry for the.
Oh, no, it's a good point. Yeah, you'll find that this is primarily utilized, you know, in the big open spaces on the mountain, but then we've also included a lot of the civic spaces that are within more urbanized areas. So again, those schools, but also the city parks and things throughout the, throughout the city. The next place type was that foothill residential and this one is primarily a residential detached place type and it's the least dense place type in the city. Generally, we're looking at pretty large lot, single-family housing and open space within this particular place type. This is really intended to be in areas where you're not anticipating a lot of additional development and density. You know, there's a conscious effort to focus resources onto areas that are more logical when it comes to additional development and infrastructure in the future. And a lot of the areas in the far eastern fringes are not necessarily the most practical for that.
And you're thinking of like water, power, transportation?
Exactly, yeah. It's, you know, there's, there's a limited ability to get additional infrastructure in that area. It's not somewhere that would necessarily be cost beneficial to do so. And so we're trying to say that in the future, we're envisioning that it stays fairly low density, larger lot, primarily residential and open space. So this is a, kind of that transition from the wildland into the more urban areas. Are there questions, a discussion on these ones?
If you guys have any input when it comes to the description or the key attributes from China.
Yeah.
Is putting in this part of our description, the part of the reason this area is this, is this way and why it's one dwelling unit per acre is because of the slope? I feel like obviously this is an important document that we use with the community but also with the legislature who has a focus on smaller lots for density, which works if the land is flat, it won't work if the land is sloped and where you're trying to find enough of an area to be able to build on. And so I'm wondering if in the description, that an important characteristic is just the significant slopes of this area.
That's a good note.
That is very good, yeah, because I think we talk about the slope in the character area aspect, but I don't know if that's necessarily covered explicitly in the first type.
Well, in those same lines, council member, I think of like how where a longer foothill residential is, the facilities we have up there really don't support a lot of high density. But it would be really hard and expensive to upgrade those facilities to where they could. The roadways or utilities, everything, right?
Things like pumping water up to, yeah.
Same thing with like thinking about how we deal with the state if it, it's a way to intensify this area. If they send them down.
True.
Right.
That's a good point.
By the way, Kate's just.
Oh. Turn the light, try it.
I was just looking around.
You're good.
All right. Anything else on these two?
As far as looking at page 47, does anyone have concerns about where that's placed? If that's big enough or is it too small or is it big or?
Yeah, so we're, we're focusing that primarily east of Bountiful Boulevard.
What do you think, Justin?
So during the stakeholder group, this is probably the, one of the areas that we focus the most, spent the most time on, is where these boundaries occurred and I went through quite a few revisions.
Really?
Do you, do you like where it landed? Do you think it's right?
I think that's a, looking quite a bit, but moving it west of Bountiful Boulevard, I think in areas, some areas could make sense, but for the most part, I think Bountiful Boulevard becomes a really easy demarcation point for.
I did recently, I mean, if slope is one of our descriptors. I was recently walking a neighborhood near Councilwoman Barr's house and Rock apartment. It's got some fairly steep terrain. I did not enjoy walking.
Sorry.
Could you also say that that is pretty much built out? Like how would, I don't know if we're to redevelop it.
Yeah, I don't know where we develop it. It would be a difficult area to redevelop because of its slope, right? Like because you'd be, how you would put in the building footprint for a, a large complex and then where you find the parking, I imagine, the terrace in parking for a large complex would be very expensive, I guess. But to your point of, you know, should some of them creep west of Bountiful Boulevard? There are, you know, if.
I would wonder now that Eagle Ridge Drive is connected, it's, and Bountiful Boulevard turns into Fourth North, I think there might, we might need to, but is that where this is right here? I can't really tell because I can't see what's.
Yeah, it's hard in a small.
So is, is that where it turns, so is this Fourth North? Oh, no, here's Fourth North area.
Yeah, Fourth North comes up here and it stays this.
So all of this area is going to start to be developed more, I would think, especially since there's the new water tank. So that, to Councilwoman Bradshaw's point, I would maybe.
I'm sorry.
Can I, can I just make a comment? One of the things I was hopeful to see is maybe some changes in where we would like future development to occur and what it looks like we've done is we've just outlined what's existing. And that, that's a little disappointing to me. My hope was that we would have a new land use where we would say, what would we like to see? Because I, and when we talk about future development and we say, well, it's mostly built out, I tend to disagree. I look at it from a developer's point of view and I know that as land prices increase, what may have been built out in someone's mind is absolutely up for grabs as land prices increase. And so that's what I was hoping to see more of, is where would we like to see changes for future development? And unfortunately, it looks like we've just outlined what's existing.
Well, especially I'd like to disagree.
I think it's really portion of downtown that I began with.
Okay. And I guess, and I guess that's fair to say, I'm looking mainly at the foothills. Well, because one of the comments I made, you know, I, I actually think it would be pretty cool if you slated some higher density living up on Bountiful Boulevard up by 1800 South. You already have some condos on one side. I think the other side would be a really cool place to do some high-density towers possibly, like, I think that could be cool. It was a comment that I made when we were doing interviews and, you know, I just don't know if any discussion happened with that. So I guess I don't know all of the changes that have taken place and I'm open to look at that.
Well, yeah, I think you'll, you'll probably like what we see in the rest of the place types because these two, in particular, are probably more of, you know, this is kind of where you're at with these ones and we weren't anticipating a lot of changes necessarily in these areas. But other areas in the city, we definitely are anticipating more change and more infill development and kind of a shift in some of the development patterns. So maybe we can hop into the.
Before you leave this page, you do have one tyco.
Welling.
It's one welling.
One welling unit.
So we would appreciate if you send tycos, send them over.
You and I both did.
So we could focus on the big picture and I would be more than happy to go over them to Logan Simpson. to one Simpson.
So if I could piggyback on Alan's comment, the city has a restriction on developing property that's over thirty percent slope right now. And probably at some point, with engineering and construction methods improving, there are going to be some lots that could be reasonably developed that will gather enough finance that it might make it feasible. So that's something that could be looked at in the future. I don't know that there's any appetite to look at changing that thirty percent threshold right now.
That's a good point.
But that's what pretty much defines what can go on in that area, is the thirty percent slope, so.
If I could add two comments.
Please.
The thirty percent standard seems to be more of an industry standard in what would essentially require a variance for construction or not. Obviously, through this process and through these policies, we can go ahead and look into it. But it's been proven time and time again that that seems to be the magic number. And the further comment regarding Eagle Ridge Drive, I just wanted to simply say, I was asked many years before we built that road through the pioneering agreement and all that good stuff by the same developers. Francisco wanted to put townhouses and triplexes, and I'd like to put that up there. It wasn't in the foothill zone. It was R four, and it simply wasn't supported by the code. And then Brock started even requesting, I think, yeah, that's his name, even at PUD. And I couldn't give him an answer. I could say, you could submit the zone change, you could submit the PUD application, you could roll the dice, and we'll go from there. So it wasn't a no-brainer where we drew the line, as the city for quite some time has elected to use Bountiful Boulevard as the defining overall west boundary of the foothill zone, based on the topography and the terrain. I'm not saying we don't, we can't change it. I'm not implying that. I'm just sort of reminding them, the purpose of the land use map to help Francisco, Amber, staff, even you, to not simply have a guidance regarding commercial property, but also residential in this collective approach on what we think each area should be in the future. So just a quick, good, good, bad reminder of the overall purpose of the land use map.
I'll quickly just add a little thing on that. I know, I'm trying to move on. So I hear that you're saying, I think on the parks, though, it's harder because of to circle someone's private property on here and say, like, in the future, could we reschedule space? Could put us in some risky water with economic thinking or like, I don't know. I think it could. And so I think it's hard to just circle someone's property and say, clearly, there's a need for a park here, and it should go here, it should go in this place. So maybe there's like a disclaimer that we recognize there's a gap. I'm looking at the north side of the city here. There's also some gaps around Fourth North where we can tell that there's not walkability to parks, and we would desire to see a park in that location without taking a property on the map.
Yeah, and that's one of the advantages, like the, that we looked at was shows that, you know, we're welcoming parks in all of these different areas, and that's definitely supporting use. So you can say that that's kind of wrapped up into that place type as a use. In fact, you can see in all these place types, we include open space specifically as a component. So we want to make sure that that's included throughout the city everywhere, really, to differing degrees depending on the development type that we're expecting. So for like this one, so neighborhood residential or neighborhood mixed residential, there are a couple of things to consider. The neighborhood residential is going to be your kind of more standard residential neighborhood, but we are looking at additional development typologies, what fits within that. So like accessory dwelling units are already permitted, you know, so we're making sure we're accounting for that. We're also saying that, you know, maybe things like duplex or townhomes can be more appropriate in areas that are closer to, you know, major roadways and better access and utility infrastructure. So we're looking at kind of trying to say, hey, yeah, it's residential, but there's also potential for very limited commercial, you know, where there's areas that make sense if there's a, you know, major intersection, you know, there's some forum store type things. You know, we would love to be able to allow that in the future. We're also anticipating, though, that it is still going to be predominantly detached single-family, right? So the generalized, these mixed, you can see that kind of tan color, that's what that's denoting. And then the other yellow color is, you know, maybe some of those other residential typologies we talked about. The neighborhood mixed residential is pretty similar to that, just with more housing diversity. We're anticipating it to kind of bridge the gap between those more residential, you know, suburban-style neighborhoods that you see a lot of, to areas where there's going to be better transit access and better, you know, access and infrastructure. So there could be the potential for, you know, more multi-unit, cottage courts. So this is a great place for infill development with additional residential typologies. Yeah.
Can you explain to me, this is just, maybe I missed it. I thought I knew what residential detached and residential attached to referring to, but then I saw that you then also had a term residential multi-unit. Can you, I understand what that is. What's, what's the difference then between residential detached and residential attached?
So residential detached would be like a standalone, single-family home. A residential attached could be like a duplex, or it could also be like a townhome. Generally, they're individually owned.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought. So their multi-unit is something more than a townhome. It's more like a, it's like a apartment.
Multi-unit would be a condo or apartment.
Okay.
Yeah, a building with.
So Sean, you're asking the right question, at the right time, in that, in that the city, in all of the Rs, the R four, R three, R one, we do not allow duplexes. The code simply indicates that if a duplex is existing, it's allowed to remain in place. There, it also says that it could further expand. So this is a question, especially I'm looking at the left-hand side here, the neighborhood residential. Here's my question. What do you think about this recommendation of the duplex in pretty much all of the city?
And I'll add that one of the reasons we're looking at that is because there's potential that the legislature is also looking at that and making it coming your way whether you want it or not. So we're trying to work with that sort of factor versus ignore that.
What do you mean, that the legislature's going to require cities to have, to allow duplexes or residential?
Kind of like they did ADUs, it's something they're looking at.
How do we understand the missing middle? Isn't that where the missing middle really focuses is duplexes and triplexes?
Yeah.
And try and see how we can intermingle those into the single-family neighborhoods?
And I will say that the big thing with like the residential multi-unit or like apartment buildings, what we, this is really focusing on is that smaller scale. This is not a, you know, five over one type of thing where you've got a big apartment building next to houses. We want to focus on that transition and those smaller-scale buildings that make sense to have that appropriate transition, which Bountiful actually has a surprising amount of, you know, in some of these other areas with some of the older, smaller apartment buildings. We'd like to see new ones to come in to complement those and really help complete the housing picture of Bountiful.
I feel like the avenues, maybe you've mentioned this in a previous meeting, but the avenues have done a really good job of having various sizes of residential units intermixed, and it's very complementary to each other. I feel like that's where socially, you kind of break down those barriers of single-family versus the multifamily in our neighborhoods and our schools and so on and so forth.
Absolutely.
And I feel like as you walk down the street or drive down the street, it's almost inconceivable. Or you don't even notice, it doesn't stand out.
Wouldn't know. Yeah.
So what goes hand in hand with the term missing middle? It's always been scale appropriate.
Scale, and also like design-wise. And where's the door, the garage placed? How tall is it, the porches? There's, it becomes, you have to finesse it in the, in the design guidelines.
Yeah, and this does have some of that design, you know, guidance in here, where it's talking about, hey, you might have up to four stories in a really, you know, on the edge of a really dense area. So maybe this is where it's transitioning to more densities elsewhere. If there's, if it makes sense to have that transition, but generally, you're going to have that, you know, two- to three-story kind of development that will help blend it in with that residential neighborhood. Things like mansion houses are mentioned in the criteria as well, which I think are a great opportunity to have additional dwelling units in a way that makes sense with a residential neighborhood. Because, yeah, you can get, you know, four or five apartments in something that looks like a big house.
I think if you remember that, so it's not four or five-story, or maybe even not even three-story.
Yeah.
I think if it's two-story, it can still accommodate a two or three-plex, but not stand out from our typical neighborhoods, for the most part.
So this is, this is big, I'm telling you. This is big for Bountiful. This is not what we've done. So I don't know, Joe, if it's appropriate to say, let's get a head nod on duplexes. Again, as it says, compatible, scale-appropriate housing typologies. Are we okay with that? If, if we come back, as Cecily was indicating, or come back with the new code, that will have, that will determine through that legislative process what it means to be compatible, scale-appropriate housing typologies. Are we okay with the duplexes? Are we okay with the townhomes? Are we okay with the triplex? Are we okay with those four-plex in the neighborhood residential area?
So actually, I have a question that I wondered about first, that has, it deals with that. Is, in here, we talk about like an appropriate transition within the area to areas of more, more intensity on one end of the area versus the other, kind of have this nice gradation. And I'm wondering, though, can we encode, I mean, right now, our code is R four, you know? But, I mean, are we going to put, by codifying it, put like, oh, this little area next to R four, or this huge, you know, I mean, because once people come with their plans and say, this is how I want to develop my property, we have to develop it, we have to allow them to do it unless we've got something that says it otherwise. And it seems like we'd be micromanaging too much if we're saying, well, you can have it on high, you know, at major intersections or at higher-density sides. I'm just wondering how we can even say that in code.
Well, you're putting out a good, a good question, a good clarification we should make. So the future land use map and the place types and the things we're talking about in this document are policy. Your zoning code and your ordinances that are in place for your development code, that is your law, right? So they're required to follow the zoning ordinance. They are not required to follow your policy. They're only required to follow what's currently adopted. So what this does is provide you additional guidance to say, okay, they want to rezone into a maybe more intense residential district. Is that in fact appropriate for this area? And you can go to this plan and say, okay, well, they are actually calling for a little bit more intensity in areas like this, so we're maybe comfortable with that more intense zoning district. So it's a way for you to check what the request is to see if that change makes sense. And as Francisco mentioned, having a change in zoning code in the future might update the, your current palette of zoning ordinances and make them a little more in sync with these, the plan that, you know, the different types of housing typologies it's calling for. But that's something that would have to come down the road. So this plan is just saying aspirationally, what would we like to see where? And then future steps can help make that happen. But this is just kind of the overall vision of where we think things might shake out and how that could look on the ground.
And to that point, the vision is so important, because generations from now, as they look at this document and say, oh, that was what they had in mind, right? And then they look at this zone text amendment that comes before us and say, does it jive? And if we said now that we want duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes, when that application comes in, the applicant's going to think of this document and say, see, you said that you wanted this. Why do you say, and it's going to be supporting their argument, right? So I've seen firsthand how the vision that we're creating here seems like it's very nebulous and very touchy-feely, but it's actually really important that we get this right.
And I really like the vision. I just am wondering how we translate that into words that are going to make what comes before us look the same way that we are envisioning with this statement.
And I wonder, because there's kind of two sides to that. One side is, does the city drive that zone change? Do we drive changing our zoning to match this? Or do we just set this vision up and let people come and apply for that zone change? And I think it's probably mixture of both.
That's what I see.
So then would it be variances that they're getting, I mean?
No.
No zones.
It would be zone changes and land use code text amendments, like the parking one we had.
Right.
It would be combination of both.
But zone changes, it seems like that would be really minute if you're saying, well, next to the major, you know, I don't know. It would be a lovely map.
They'd like to do something with it that lines up well with the vision that comes before us, for us to change it up.
It gives flexibility to the, to planning it out.
I would hope we'd be more intentional than just saying, this will put this vision out there, and then people can just come in and apply for zone changes here, there, willy-nilly. I mean, I'm just stating that. I hope that we will intentionally implement the vision. I don't know how long it will take.
We will, but it will take time.
It will. I see this as you look at the short and the mid and the long-term goals, but like it's.
So that's why it's a mix of both, like, it's us doing it and it's also people that apply.
Right. But I think as, you know, I think we need to view it as we're going to, I hope that we're viewing it, and, I mean, I can't get inside everyone's brains, but I hope that we're viewing it as something that we're going to intentionally implement here, that we're not just going through this exercise and like, well, we'll see how this goes over the next twenty years, because none of us are going to be here in twenty years.
Can I clarify what you're saying real quick?
Do you think, well, maybe some will.
So are you saying, are you saying we need to change the zone?
Well, not today, but I'm just saying, I think as we talk about it, and to Beverly's point of like, well, you know, what, what are we wanting to see where and how is it going to be implemented? And I don't think we can envision all those things, you know, like, and I think, you know, that's the beauty of it. I mean, some, some things we're going to see, we probably will say, oh, hmm, and some things we're going to give triple thumbs ups to and be like, that was super great. But I, I just really hope that we are having that vision of like, let's set this up so whatever's in the short term, those of us who sit in these seats now, we can work toward implementing, and that we're really setting up future planning commissions and city councils to, to also implement. And, and I, I think that we can get hung up on, oh, there might be a really weird project. But I think we have to trust that if, you know, we put in a good process, that that won't, I mean, for the most part, it won't happen. And that, that there are checks and balances in the whole process through planning and city staff and the commission and city council. And, and when we get to that point, to Jesse's point, maybe we don't, I mean, want four-story buildings in the, you know, sorry, in the.
Neighborhood residential.
Maybe we do. Maybe we don't want it in the foothill residential, but there are some in foothill residential right now. I just, there are no sacred idols, because even, I don't know what it's called, but it's by the firehouse, it's by the fire station. I just think it's, the legislature is, I would like to be intentional and plan accordingly. And I think that everybody here obviously takes it super seriously. And I'm not saying, indicating otherwise, but.
Yeah, I think we take it seriously. I think, like, if you go up to Federal Heights, which is where my grandmother lives, there are quite a few fourplexes and duplexes, but you wouldn't know it because of how they were built and how they're situated on the property. So I think if we, if we are intentional, as we've talked about, I think we can plan for this, and I think we can also, it's worded in such a way that it gives us some flexibility to implement those things when it comes down to, you know, adopting new codes and things. But I think if you drive around, I could send you to three duplexes and a fourplex right now in Federal Heights, like Military Way, which you wouldn't even know that they were. But it's how they were built and it's how it's situated on the lot.
That's a good admission, all of those.
And there, excuse me?
And we can't envision all of those things in the future.
No, but I, yeah, but I'm saying.
Put these super strict parameters around every envisioned project.
So to Francisco's first question, I'm okay with the way it's worded.
Yeah, as we get back to this page, is there, are there any changes to description or key attributes that you guys would recommend or wish you could?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question about the description. Is everybody here comfortable with the idea of including duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes in neighborhood residential up on the. up on the old orchard slope?
I am.
I am.
If it's, if it's done tastefully.
That's right, we don't need to feel tastefully.
Well, but we. Yeah, but when it, when it comes to the code, we can.
I think, yeah, I think you can do it.
But scale appropriate is a huge term, because that is one thing that you can generally control.
I can try one thing on this. Do the townhomes bring these little claws because of the way townhomes are designed? It's usually, you know, with the garage, you know, with the garage. And I'm really happy about having fourplexes. This would probably come later, we don't have to park right here, but maybe like no more than three or four, or, I don't know. But that just makes me a little nervous that those won't fit into the character as well. They won't blend in like working.
Can we catch that under the scalability clause?
Yeah, largely.
I think that's a good comment, though.
That is.
Because townhomes can become very.
Yeah.
There may be a few areas where it works.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I do so.
There may be some great areas where we're like, yeah, that's a fantastic place to put it. And like, one of the bots I think is like above corner 22, kind of coming up that road, like, that may be a great place for some townhomes. There, but.
Yeah. Compatible, scale appropriate.
Yeah.
Those are the key words.
When we're thinking of townhomes too, like, yeah, you can't get that really robotic repetitive pattern. But I think a lot of people were mentioning things like the development by Lakeview Hospital, those townhomes. And they think they fit really well into the neighborhood. And so it definitely can't be done in a way that is compatible with townhomes.
Oh, the opposite.
Yeah, kind of in the corner.
It's either a triplex or a.
Yeah, and that's, that's gonna have to get more specific into what your code winds up being. This gives you the ammunition to be able to sort of update that code in a way that is in accordance with that vision.
So I, I just want to bring politics into it for just a second. I have colleagues who were unwilling to have neighbors come and testify in front of a council meeting about short-term rentals.
That's me.
And yet, and allow whole home short-term rentals. And now we're going to have people come in and they're going to say, what in the world are you doing allowing townhomes who are fourplexes next to me? And you're gonna say, tough cookie.
No, I'm gonna say that those are long, that those are long-term residents.
You think that they, it doesn't increase the intensity of the use next door to them to at least the same scale and probably more so than a short-term rental would?
Well, yeah, I guess to your point, yeah, it would. But it, again, it depends on a lot and it depends on, a short, I see a short-term rental versus a regular, a long-term resident as two different things.
Sure.
Completely. You know, you know your neighbor and.
Maybe.
Well.
You have a single-family home that has eight kids, right? And they have six cars or whatever. Or you have the same lot size that's a three, three separate units that has three cars.
Just pointing out the reality that this isn't going to be a lollipops and roses process. You're gonna have residents in here screaming at you about lowering their property values and destroying the neighborhoods that we all say we want to protect, and it's gonna be uncomfortable.
And to Richard's point, like this fourplex, one of those units could turn into an SDR, right? Like it totally could.
Yeah. If the owners, if the owner lives in one of them.
The owner has to live. No, that is a good point, Richard, I appreciate it. Thank you for that.
So when we talk about, I want to understand from a planning commission and a planning staff, if, if we're talking about, well, can we make this scalable? Is, there are different developments throughout the city where you have kind of multiple, you know, units or, you know, five townhomes, another break and then another five. There may be spots in the light yellow, the neighborhood residential, where when you're talking about a scale, maybe, you know, a row of four or something makes sense, but not a row where the entire development is 20. So talking to how you would describe that, because to Richard's point, I am actually not comfortable with the description in neighborhood residential or in neighborhood residential. I'm not. And so I have to, I would have to feel more comfortable that the way you can describe these things, they become more thoughtful and intentional, because I don't think we have very many tools allowed to us as a city under state law to help as my favorite, well, not my favorite, because my favorite Jesse Bell quote is about trees. My second favorite Jesse Bell quote, which is about good design mitigates density. And since we don't have a lot of those, if the description is all we've got, I think the descriptions would have to become much more robust.
You're, so to clarify, you're, you're kind of uncomfortable right now for duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes in this paragraph?
Yes.
Because she's not confident, she's not confident that we can mitigate with design, with our tools.
So do we, do we explain better what that could look like in that description is what you're saying?
Could I ask another question? Because it's the, like Jesse just said, duplex, triplex, fourplex, is it also the residential density range? The one through, the one to 10 dwelling units per acre? Or is it both, or is it one or the other?
The, all of the above. And, and, you know, this light yellow, also, I feel like we've used colors that are very close to each other.
And that don't match from one map to the others.
And I keep having to go back and forth and like, is that lightest yellow or medium yellow?
This is the same color.
But this is, this residential, neighborhood residential is the biggest, the bulk of Bountiful. This is a big area and this area is, is diverse on slope. Depending on where you're at in the city. We have different ravines and draws throughout this area, whether you're talking about Stone Creek, Holbrook, Mill Creek, you know, we've got these different draws that I think are impactful on our, our slopes and kind of how we get a sense of feeling like there's space without having as much empty parks defined. And so I'm, it's a really big area to do this things with this little description.
One thing that I want back to, and maybe, maybe I misunderstand this, but we pull back to your last page. Because we have this little guidance map of what looks to me like percentage of what we want in the area.
Yeah, it's a general, generalized kind of.
Does that, can we have more guidance there, maybe in the description? Would that help where we're kind of limiting?
It might, I'm just telling you, I am globally uncomfortable.
Hi, this is drafted. I want to make sure that I mention that we do give additional guidance to what each of these place types look like within the character areas as well. So in the, in the land use section, back down here, just real quick to show you, there's a couple of different.
Are you talking like, when you refer to like the south character area?
Yeah, in the character areas, there is a description of.
Forty-five would be.
So, yeah, like when you get, there's that development pattern thing, so if you go into the map here, it talks about, you know, hey, neighborhood mixed residential works like this, the neighborhood residential in this area works like that. So it does give you some additional guidance about what that looks like in the specific areas. Which is one of the advantages of doing it sort of by these character areas. And, you know, you get to talk about what these place types mean in the context of each sector of the city.
That's gonna be really confusing to our residents to read. So I'm on page forty-one, east character area, and it says, existing elements is under a low density nature with some pockets of intensity such as townhomes and two-story condos, okay? And then when you go back to this description, we're like, well, no, townhomes, duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. One to 10 units per acre, that doesn't sound like some pockets of intensity with two-story condos. Those, those feel like they conflict to me and our resident is gonna say, so which is it?
I mean, that's, that's a valid point, but I think one of the things we were trying to hope to do with this is citywide, trying to give everybody its own place type. Unless we have 75 place types, that's gonna get pretty hard to get really specific. So what we're trying to talk to in the actual character area is kind of the segment of these different place types that we're hoping that the local sort of focuses in on in the context of that particular neighborhood, right? But this gives you kind of that generalized place type. And then the character area gives you a little bit more specific guidance on how that can apply there.
But it does sound to me like there's concern as to how you get really clear on the vision in certain areas, is that?
Yeah, because now if I switch to the north character area, which has some light yellow and some neighborhood mixed residential, you know, its description and then the description of this specific color type, also, I feel like are unhelpful. You know, this description of what the north character area is, because it's got several different, it becomes hard to understand.
Would you apply it to just the one neighborhood residential or the neighborhood mixed residential?
Yeah.
So it's harder for them to be distinct?
It's harder for them to be understood, what are we aiming for?
Yeah, that makes sense.
But it does say, like, variety of housing on the, like, I'm just looking at the north character area, but maybe I'm not looking, okay, now I'm looking at the development patterns that it has. That's where it's broken out again.
Well, maybe we can just take them one by one. And, and on page 28, where we were talking about neighborhood residential, neighborhood mix, I mean, maybe tonight, we're not gonna get to the bottom of townhomes, duplex, triplex, fourplex. Maybe that is gonna need more, you know. More discussion.
Well, yeah, maybe we can, I mean, we've only got about, put less than an hour or so. Yeah, I want to make sure we're at least able to touch on some of these other ones and make sure we cover the big stuff.
But that's, but that's great, Kate, your points are well taken. And so on this, on this page, the neighborhood residential and neighborhood mixed residential, it seemed like the biggest question mark was, you know, townhomes, duplex, triplex, fourplex. Was there any other questions on that page, on those two pages?
I have a question of going down.
I was gonna say, one of the things that was brought up was the one to 10 dwelling units per acre, that was, that was a question.
That's my question too, like, it would be, because they, bringing those two different things into alignment and what that looks like, the units per acre and how that overlays with townhome duplex and fourplex.
Housing types?
Yeah, in the housing types, because it's hard to envision like how we then look at those two separate things in an area of this city.
I would like to suggest that the neighborhood residential, if it is literally the bulk of our city, this one is the most important one to get right, because this is, this is everyone's home, the home department. That's what we crave our residents, this is their home. And screwing up this section, I mean, I know I love Main Street, I want our downtown corridor, but downtown compared to this giant swath from the southern boundary to the northern boundary is the biggest chunk of Bountiful and it is what people think of when they think of it.
Amen to that.
Yeah, well said.
So Kate, I agree with that, now you think you're right, we have to get it right. It has to be, it has to be what is gonna work in our city. I think it would be really, I don't know, maybe we're too far down the road for this, but I, I don't think so. When I'm looking at the map on page 46, I think, oh my goodness, um, oh, sorry, 47.
Forty-six and 47.
The map, and you're looking at, I think all of us could name places above, I'm just gonna use Davis Boulevard as like a big demarcation, like above and below Davis Boulevard that fit in these categories. There are duplexes, there are triplexes, there are townhomes, all currently now existing, new ones, old ones, they're all over the place. And so it's, I, I just feel like it's something to keep in mind. And I don't know what the right, where we land, what the right verbiage is or the right policy exactly. But what I do know is from north to south, east to west, in this light yellow, hard to see, because it's a dark yellow zone, is that all of these uses are there. We have multifamily housing, we have apartments, we have duplexes, we have, we have it all, all over. Condos, we have everything right now as it exists. And so I, I don't think we're protecting something from not happening.
Function poorly, I would say. Some, some of those denser developments in the giant yellow swath functions well as, as integrated parts of neighborhoods. And if we can figure out in our descriptions or our planning, how to replicate the ones that, that do well, to move to places that get redeveloped, then that would definitely be something to think about. But there's definitely developments that we could all name inside the giant yellow swath. Until you pick different colors, that's what it is now.
The giant yellow slog. Call it a slog.
Banana slug.
Yeah, but giant yellow, they have a slug on the inside. But some of the, some of those, like, don't work. They have, they have struggles in terms of how they fit into the neighborhood, they have struggles with parking.
Yeah, maybe like three houses up in the cul-de-sac is not the ideal place for a fourplex, right?
Yeah, and so until, I think, if, if the description is our most important legislative tool, figuring out how to describe what we want to see, because those are the best examples of if one must accept density, this is the example we want to cite, I think that needs to be a big area of focus.
It almost makes me wonder if in the description you define the things you absolutely don't want to see. And, you know, I don't know, is that looking backwards? It's like, okay, they have appropriate parking, they have, you know, list the things that make those developments not work and say, we don't want this in our city, right? This is not what we, when we talk about adding density, we don't want it to be like that. Define what that is, right?
I want to point out that this description does include the term scale appropriate, because that's a huge driver of whether.
Can you help us understand scale appropriate?
Yeah, so scale appropriate is talking about, you know, you don't want to go from a six-story apartment building to a single-family, you know, rambler next door. That doesn't make a lot of sense in a transition of uses from that kind of really intense to very low intense. What we're looking for is that stuff in between. We're wanting to have, hey, you know, we won't have a duplex, but we want it to be next to the, you know, the single family. And that can make sense, because it's not going to be, it's, it's going to look like another house. It's not going to be another, you know, a big apartment building. And it's the same thing, even if it's a three or fourplex, you know, there's ways to do that integrated into that neighborhood fabric. So we're talking generally about scale, so taking into comparison what's next door. Hey, you know, is, are the houses next door, are they two stories already? Does a two-story building make sense in this, or does it make sense if that happens to be a three-story building?
Joe, do you think we can describe what you just did in here? Because I think scale appropriate in here is a really easy word to add to the description. But helping someone that's not familiar with Bountiful come in and build that?
Yeah, we can definitely add a lot more guidance around that, because I, I think that what you all are saying is exactly what we're trying to do in this plan. And so if we can make sure we get the additional descriptive stuff in there to, to pair with that. Because the challenge is when you get into things like parking and, you know, the exact number of units and how many can be in a row of townhomes, but that's all stuff that has to be dealt with in a code. That can't really be dealt with in the plan. So we can describe the ideal development pattern that we would like, but as far as those super specific things, we're gonna have to wait for a code to, to come along for that.
But like, one thing I will say that we kind of need caution when we talk about scalability, because if we, if we just take the scalability and we say, it doesn't make sense to do a large development next to a small home, maybe it does, maybe in some areas of Bountiful it does, in most it doesn't. But if that's what we run to, like, we, we have to be open to like, hey, this, this has, there has to be a first somewhere in an area we would like to see greater density.
Well, I think, I think this is a really important discussion, and I, I think that. Well, I think, I think this is a really important discussion, and I, I think that it's nice to know that we have an agreement on at least what we need to double to more in this section, and so maybe let's move...
I love that the mayor keeps moving, I thought it was perfect.
Mayor, before we move on, can I make one more comment? I think, I think it's important to remember that probably at least ninety-five percent of the folks in the great green-yellow swath, whatever that is, are living next door to single-family residences and have no diversity of use around them at all. Everybody else down here in the darker yellow and the other colors, they already have diverse uses in their neighborhoods, and when they bought their homes and made their biggest investment of their lives, they knew that stuff was around. So I, I'm really uncomfortable springing things on that giant swath that aren't super carefully controlled, because those people bought what they bought, where they bought it, because that's what they wanted.
Probably don't want to change.
Indeed. Oh, they won't, they won't want to change.
Have they heard the governor's speech last week?
But we, we're already putting ADUs into their, into their neighborhoods, which I think is a good step. I just don't want to, I just don't want to be the one to spring wholesale change on the ninety-five percent that don't have any diverse use around them, so, just me.
Good, good, very good discussion, thank you.
Um, well, let me go through these other place types real quickly here. We have transit-ready development. This is centered around future BRT routes, um, going up and down Main Street. Um, there was a lot of discussions to kind of how that could fit in, but I think that the goal of this place type is to really create a sort of walkable neighborhood where you can get access to that transit. It's that last mile, right? If I, if I get from my house to the transit stop, I have a walkable, easy-to-navigate neighborhood to do so. Um, and there's a, you know, this is a great place to introduce additional housing options. Um, we know that especially affordable housing requires great access to transit, so being able to, to fit additional housing needs in areas closer to transit is a, is a win. Um, and so we're expecting that, you know, this would have, this is one of the more dense areas of the city as far as additional development goes, but we're hoping that we're doing it in a place that makes sense for, for Bountiful, looking at that kind of future BRT corridor. Um, it also includes areas like, you know, Renaissance Center, um, and some of those other developments to kind of blend that development with the, the rest of the city. Then we also have a couple of different commercial districts. The least intense is this neighborhood center, um, and so we're looking at this in areas like wherever Mandarin is or where Dick's Market is. Um, you know, these are sort of neighborhood and commercial retail nodes that we're anticipating can continue, and we'd like to see, you know, built up for future, you know, neighborhood destinations to have things on there.
So on the map, it's, this is the Mandarin?
Yeah, um, and then there's also, the other thing I wanted to point out is there's kind of a hatched overlay on this of Long Orchard.
Yeah.
Um, and one of the things that we wanted to point out with that overlay is we're talking about lots fronting Orchard. You know, it makes sense to have some of those neighborhood commercial uses there. It's a busy corridor, there's already a lot of commercial interspersed throughout that corridor. We think that there's the ability to continue to develop that as part of the neighborhood structure, to give folks that corner store to walk to and have it be a, you know, diverse and interesting street to be on. We, but that said, we're also thinking that, you know, we could foresee additional residential development on there as well as some of that commercial. So that Orchard Corridor is in the mixed, the neighborhood mixed residential, um, so it's potential that you could see additional housing types that, you know, again, there's bus routes on that street, it makes sense to have a little bit more housing options there too.
Is that why Two Hundred West is hatched as well?
Two Hundred West is hatched with the next, um, more intense, and so that's a little bit of a different mix, so a little bit more intense commercial, but we see the same type of potential residential and commercial immigration on Two Hundred West there too.
Joe, I really like the image of walking to the corner store, but all of the corner stores in Salt Lake are closed and being used as residences now. Can you tell me where there's a corner store that's in use in Utah?
Yeah, I live above one.
Where is that?
Uh, I live in Salt Lake. But I, I will say that there are plenty of options for those residential nodes. It does include, this, this does include some mixed use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's, it's possible to see that, that you have residential on the second floor or behind, any kind of commercial use would be great, but having those neighborhood restaurants and things, I mean, you think of, you think of the great neighborhood nodes and the areas people like to be in, and, and picking on Salt Lake, a place like Ninth and Ninth or the avenues, there's a lot of, like, corner restaurants and things that people love, and so many people express their desire for more restaurant options in Bountiful, and so we want to make sure that there are places that people can go to, you know, I mean, again, it might not necessarily make sense in the market right now on one of these corners for some reason, but thinking twenty years from now, there could be a lot of additional housing in the op, in the area, there could be a demand for that kind of service, and we want to make sure that there's the ability to do that in the future. Thank you.
I do like, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, the theme of this, I do like how it's more focused on, on the private sector moving in as they see fit and as they see a demand. That's one thing I do like about this approach. It's not forcing a zone change right now that might not be developable.
Yeah, or it's, it's more to the, to the future, to helping say, but...
And I just wanted to say that, that, going back to that corner store, the overlay on Orchard or Second West provides an opportunity for something like the Bountiful Professional Office, which we looked at, uh, wasn't a month ago, in that they applied for a rezone and we furthermore changed the code so they could introduce more retail uses at that location. I don't know, that's not a good example, because it's not currently a corner store or a retail shop, but it, it, it could be that in the future.
Can you tell us what the hot peak is right there?
Yeah, that is Neighborhood Center, that is, I think, Dick's Market, that corner. Um, so... Yeah, that's that kind of node that exists right there.
Some gas stations.
So I think I'm, this is me talking, thinking through this a little bit too, but I feel like I'm struggling a little bit with the Neighborhood Center, and to my, this picture, the picture, to me that seems more dense than what the vision for the center is. I'm seeing a Neighborhood Center more as like the immigration market harmonies, like that.
That scale.
That's what I was imagining.
See, I love that scale.
That's what I'm thinking as well, and that seems to be dense as well.
It's funny you mention that, because that was one of the options from the open house that we showed people. This is what they picked for that.
Oh, okay. So Chrissy, do you think that this is more in line?
Yeah.
That's the scale that I was imagining, but...
The bistro one?
Maybe I feel like bistro have that often made this one a little smaller.
But I mean, the thing is, is if you think of a neighborhood node, like the north end of, like, Page's Lane and Main Street, where you have, you know, some larger apartment, you know, something like that could make sense in those areas.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Could be a little bit of a range of different, like, scale appropriate.
This is still, I, I think that's a good, I, I think that's a good picture of the bistro line.
Yeah.
How do you guys go about the description on page thirty-one for either one of those? Anything that concerns you or stands out to you as appropriate or not appropriate?
Well, I like low-intensity commercial services, like, I like that, and I think that kind of lends to what Chrissy was saying, right? And that's what, that's actually one of the things we talked about, that we did that rezone, because we, we really liked that it was a low-intensity impact, and that's why it made sense.
That's good.
Great. Um, well, on the same commercial note, um, so kind of your mid-level intensity is the community commercial, and then the more intense, the most intense, being that commercial corridor. Um, the difference is you'll see the community commercial mostly along, like, Five Hundred South and then also attached in on that Two Hundred West corridor. The community commercial, or the, I'm sorry, the corridor commercial is primarily along, like, Five Hundred West, Eighty-Nine, those really much more intense commercial areas, where you're gonna see maybe a little bit more suburban-style developments, it's a little more auto-centric on some of those, um, compared to some of the more mid-intensity uses that we're seeing along Five Hundred South. But we think that it's interesting, so this was some of the things people picked for, for these ones, so you see, like, that two-story harmonies down in, um, Holiday as well, uh, but, you know, also one of the buildings on Four Hundred North that, uh...
Old Scott.
Yeah. It's a, so there's some existing in Bountiful already that people like and say, we want more of that. And then we were looking at the community commercial, you know, they were looking at things like, you know, this is that target in Sugar House that's, you know, kind of integrated into a fairly urban block with housing on the back, um, which is a development pattern we're seeing more and more of, where you have a commercial retail in the front that used to be just like one big box store. Now, still might be a big box store, but there's housing behind it, um, and we see that that could be a potential transition from those commercial to residential areas.
So go hit up Smiths and put some apartments behind it?
You know, it's, it's, uh, definitely something I, I have seen more and more of, but there's a walkability to it too. Yeah, exactly, so...
I'm a little concerned about the community commercial, um, around Lakeview Hospital. You know, we, we haven't made a hospital zone as a, as a special category, um, but that is a, a pretty important section right there.
Yeah.
And, uh...
Are you suggesting that it comes in a different zone all on itself?
I am, um, you know, the hospital is our largest employer in the city. Um, it, it, um, has, you know, buses next to it that feed into that hospital system, um, having a community hospital is an incredible benefit to Bountiful and all of Salt Lake and Davis. And so how we, how we describe and protect that section there at the top of this town is incredibly important, and, um, if, if someone were to, if a developer, for instance, were to read this description, they'd feel like this is a different target than the, the very specific, um, medical and hospital-supported uses we have there. Now, I do think there's, we're putting a large workforce there, and, uh, I don't know if any of you have been in the hospital cafeteria as often as I have, it's really actually great.
It's amazing.
Like, they like it?
Really?
Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah. Their staff is really good. The Bountiful Police Department and the Fire Department, they're there every day.
Really?
Um, yeah, they're really good. Um, but, so there may be some things that you would say, look, it makes sense if you're gonna have a workforce here that we may want to allow, um, restaurants or a sandwich place or something like that, but it needs to be within the goal that protecting that is incredibly important.
Yeah, if you created another zone that was specifically for the hospital, you could put in some of those other smaller uses.
Yeah, you know, in a limited, if we're, if we're supposed, if these boxes are supposed to represent percentages, they would be a small percentage, because I think it's incredibly important to protect this great, well, resource for the community and the fact that it's an economic driver for us.
Actually, yeah.
Yeah, and at one point we did have an office place type that was primarily focused around the hospital, and along the, somewhere along the way, we rolled that into the commercial place type, because we thought, hey, you know, we see that the hospital is there, but we also see that there's the ability to have those supporting retail and other kinds of uses with it. I don't think this is anticipated to say that the hospital goes away, um, but we were starting to say that we think the hospital may fit into that, so maybe we can either add additional language to describe that in more detail.
I'm gonna be an advocate for rolling it back out, because the housing components that are in this description, I don't think are appropriate for the hospital zone.
I agree for now with Kate.
The thing about the hospital is it has such height, it has, you know, so there's a lot of height there, and so surrounding uses wouldn't feel as...
It has height, but it also sits settled into a slope, so as you're, as you're building, I mean, until, this weekend it was on my job map, right?
It's lower heights around it.
It's the lower heights around it, so as it sits settled in a little kind of depression area on the hill, even though it's a four-story hospital, it sits there as though it's shorter.
And this is really a...
It's still appropriate.
Yeah.
And this is really an ongoing council discussion anyway, because we already have the hospital, the existing hospital zone, but we still, we're, you know, this has been a question we've been thinking on our minds for years. So it's, it's, you're right, it's part of the bigger discussion about what that zone looks like, but Kate, that's a good note, yeah.
I do like the idea of rolling it back out. I think it's important that we don't force about unintentionally.
I don't believe that as currently drafted it does.
I know you're, you're seeing additional uses, that, that, your developer's gonna come and say, you know, hey, let's put an apartment complex next to the hospital, whereas the highest investment use of those facilities are, that land is, is actually for uses to help feed what is an incredibly critical healthcare resource and economic resource. And once that land becomes something that is not related to the hospital, it's not gonna go back, and, you know, like, for instance, look at the, the avenues in Salt Lake. LDS Hospital is going to move, because there is nowhere for that hospital to expand. It is surrounded by residential, either single-family or density, and so how do you, how do you bring in a, you know, everyone loves having a helicopter land on the hospital next door while they're sleeping. Everyone loves having ambulances drive past while their kids are napping. Um, you, you have specialists that need to locate adjacent to the hospital, and I think we will decrease that location's viability.
Unless you're allowed for better expansion of hospital needs.
Yes.
Kate, I think you're, you're actually spot on, and I had not thought of this argument before, but this idea that...
I love that you think I'm spot on, so...
No, like, right now...
It's a tone for his prior mistakes, right? Calling the council person.
The residential is just so hot, right? And if all of a sudden we open up that space to residential, we're gonna get it. It's, we're gonna get a mega apartment building in there or something like that, and we'll lose that space for, what really supports what's going on around it, right?
Seems like, it seems like we have consensus that we want to protect, in some, in some way, shape, as long as we want to protect that.
Can I just add on to that? I think something also to keep in mind, though, is a lot of the buildings, like, for instance, the gigantic building that was just torn down over the course of almost a year. It, a lot of the buildings there are, have, are non-productive, and they were historically more productive in the hospital use zone, in hospital corollary or tangential use zones. Since Lakeview built there, and a lot of physicians and ancillary uses had offices there, there have been multiple new hospitals built in Davis County. So, I mean, I'm a major fan of the hospital, what it does for our community, and I don't know if community commercial is the right thing, but I do think it's an area that we have to maybe consider, because a lot of the buildings that are there are non-productive, and they are vacant, and there is, um, just vacant property there all around the hospital. And I think part of that is because a lot of physicians have gone elsewhere, and they've gone to the University of Utah in Farmington, or the IHC, or, I mean, there's just a lot more options, and there are a lot more buildings and physical assets for, um, ancillary medical uses. So I don't know, I feel like there might be something in between a hospital zone and to the mayor's point, it's been an ongoing conversation, and, because if the hospital zone can't result, or doesn't result in productive land use development, then it's the wrong use. So I don't know what...
I'd agree with you, Salt Lake.
Mayor, I think Mr. Hill had a comment. Just on that point, we met with the hospital's director not too long ago. Hi, sorry, I'm a back... That was the conventional wisdom, I think, five years ago, that there was, there were vacant uses. The, the, actually, the vacancy rate around the hospital for professional use is very, very low right now. And particularly in those areas where the hospital is trying to attract specialists, what they need is more space, not less. So that's what we've heard from... So that's what we've heard from, from the CEO of Lakeview. Just to go on what Kate is saying, their biggest concerns, we talked to them about the general plan about a year ago, was that we would introduce uses that would take away available, available space or hospital-related space that would allow them to grow. So I, I, I think we, we need to be careful about some of these older assumptions that are changing. And Kate is reflecting exactly what we heard from the hospital, that we risk, we risk killing the hospital by introducing uses that don't support it.
There are empty buildings, though, and demolished buildings.
Demolished buildings and vacant, and empty buildings aren't.
And vacant.
But the vacancy rate is actually very, very low.
I think for what is owned by the hospital.
No, the whole area, believe it or not. Yeah.
But I, maybe, and, and maybe I'm coming at this from a, on a personal side. When we had that meeting with the CEO, he talked about how they had tried to buy, they wanted to buy.
Yeah.
The building on the corner of Fifth South and Orchard. And we're one of those owners. No one ever talked to us about it.
I think, I think that that building is kind of a special case.
No, but I, but, but I have, it, just to the CEO's vision, in him saying, well, we really wanted to buy this building, and these are the buildings we wanted to buy, as one of the owners of those buildings, no one ever approached us. So if this was really something that you wanted, how come the discussion never happened?
Did you talk to your other co-owners?
Uh huh.
Confirm that?
Uh huh. So, so that's where I'm struggling with this. This is what we want for the hospital zone. But when the hospital zone had the opportunity to, to expand, they said they wanted to, but the initiative was never taken. So is it really a need, or is it a pie in the sky want? That's what I'm trying to understand, as we're, as we're planning forward for this.
Yeah, that was part of those conversations.
No, and I, I understand.
I agree.
That's where I'm, so that's where I'm coming, why I tend to agree a little bit more with Cecily in saying, could we do something that's in between?
Well, obviously, it's an ongoing discussion, so we'll have to, we'll have to delve into it.
One quick comment. In the, I don't necessarily, in my eyes, I look at the community commercial, and I don't know why we couldn't have a zoning district as part of this that protects the hospital.
Well, and even the CEO, when we talked about restaurants, he said he wanted restaurants. They wanted restaurants and things.
I think we're getting caught up with the word "commercial," and our minds is automatically looking into commercial zoning designations. And this is, these are not zoning designations. These are precursors to zoning. So in that category, we could have a different hospital designation than the Mandarin, and even a different one.
I'm less worried about other compatible commercials than I am about residential, denser residential development. That's what I think is, is not going to be compatible.
I, I just think that we could have a, a hospital zone that is somewhat similar to what that zone is now, or, or, or that simply doesn't support residential.
You, you could clarify that in this document.
That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
You could clarify in this document that this community commercial includes the potential for a hospital zone. It doesn't include housing.
That, that, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think the character area description could maybe get more specific as to what that means for the.
It's in the north character area.
Yeah. So we could, we could talk a lot about what the exact hospital area would look like in the future, too. Because that's the thing, is this is, this would include those hospital uses in the community commercial. But it would, one of those things like Francisco said, maybe there's something a little bit more specific when it comes to actually zoning that site that could help reinforce that. But maybe the character area is the best place to discuss that.
Yeah, probably so.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay, guys, let's talk about downtown.
Yeah. Downtown is an interesting thing. So this one, we did create a specific place type for because downtown is a very unique place in Bountiful with its own kinds of development patterns. This one focuses a lot on kind of design and making it walkable and pedestrian-oriented. And, you know, those are the things people love about downtown is that kind of Hallmark movie feel. And so this is a, a way to say, how, how is downtown going to change and grow and still kind of retain those things people love? So what we came to on this one, we do see, we talked a little bit about this, using metrics on the other thing, but any thoughts on the language on the downtown place type?
I like how it expresses active commercial uses, retail, restaurant, entertainments on the ground floor. I like how it says "active."
Absolutely, yeah.
To kind of like indicate, you know, walkability and people coming in.
Well, and it also feeds into some of the policy recommendations and things that we wanted to make, too, because we found the, like, after talking to the downtown business owners in the roundtable, hey, we're act, we're actually kind of, you know, somehow incentivizing more office uses downtown because that is the lowest parking ratio currently. So if we look at making it a more uniform parking ratio, then somebody who has a restaurant doesn't have to provide twice as much parking as somebody who has an office.
Yep.
More like four or five times.
I, I love that. You know, Richard had a bold idea, no parking for restaurants.
Indeed.
You're involved in that.
Yeah.
So I like, I love that about it. Any other thoughts on downtown?
I, I have a thought. I, I mean, maybe I'm missing this somewhere. I'm just trying to look really quickly. Where it says, it references the unique atmosphere. And I think all of us kind of know what that is because we know what that looks like. But I would love for this visioning document to talk somehow about extending the unique atmosphere to the north and the south ends. I think that unique atmosphere is distinctively right in the hub. And there are businesses and.
You mean like Fourth North to Fifth South?
Yeah. Like the, I don't know, what, what do we call it in transit? The last half-mile problem or the last mile problem?
First or last mile.
I'm going to call this the last two-block problem on both ends. Where it's, or, you know, we've got this really beautiful thing in the middle, and then it kind of peters toward the ends. And, and we want these businesses that have come in and to, to thrive and persist. And I think I would love to see this reflect that, that we want to extend this atmosphere, this unique atmosphere, and the streetscape, and the lighting, and the landscape. And, I mean, as long as we're, this is a visioning and aspirational document, I would love to have that in there because, you know, even Sean and I were, it's like, look how great that is. I'm like, right. And, but a little bit of that love dies out the last couple of blocks.
It's an awesome comment.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. And it's definitely something that we heard from a lot of the downtown business owners and property owners. So on the, on the future line use map, we did make that downtown place type go all the way from Fourth North to Fifth South. So that entire stretch of Main Street would be included in that. As part of the goals and actions that are in the, the rest of the document that we're not talking about today, there are some language about making that streetscape more uniform all the way through to mirror what's in the middle. Because that setup with the angled parking and just the two lanes of traffic seems to work a lot better for people. And they, they like that, and they want that extended. And so that's one of the things that we have in there is, you know, hey, let's, let's look at reworking the streetscape to encourage that. But then this also talks about, you know, the buildings and what goes in there and how that can, you know, complete that streetscape. So ways to, to make sure that we can continue that on to, to make sure that the entire stretch of Main Street is, is uniform when it comes to that kind of active level.
That's, that's a really good comment. Anyone else on downtown?
I agree with that we need to have it extended to full length.
Okay. Well, we only have a few more minutes, but I'll try to get through these character areas as best as possible. I think one of the most important aspects of this is that intense statement. You know, what is, what is this part of the city fulfilling in the, the scheme of the entire city? So for the central character area, we say that it is the heart of Bountiful with a unique walkable downtown, major commercial corridors with employment and retail offerings, and urban neighborhoods that provide an array of housing choices. So this is definitely a pretty diverse area when it comes to housing. And it's also, it's the only character area that has the downtown place type. And so that Main Street part was a big element we wanted to, to make sure we talked about as long, as well as those really important commercial corridors. Are there parts that we missed? Are there things that you would add or change on this statement?
This is so minor. And, but I always just, I'd like if you could add, so it says historic by a neighborhood. You could add Bountiful, it's part of a national historic district. And I think that's an important part to add, because property owners that live in that district can qualify for tax credits, things like that. And I think it should be advertised to people.
Also a historic by a, the H needs to be, that's just.
Got it.
I have one for a comment, if I may.
Yeah.
As the experience visitor coming from I-15, say, getting off of Fourth North, experiences a more of a heavy commercial type of approach, then it goes to more of that mixed residential. As they're driving up, say, to go hiking or mountain biking up to the mountain on Fourth North, up to the Bee, say, then they go through the downtown district, and then it goes back on that same development pattern before hitting a different land use. We played around a lot with that. Are we okay with that experience based on, as we go towards the mountains, we get more of an less intensive residential land uses? And you kind of hit the highlights as you hit each major thoroughfare.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay.
Is there a way for us to set a goal for uniformity of redevelopment or future development on 500 South? So that a hundred years from now, people don't drive 500 South and say, this is the suckiest street I've ever seen.
I agree, Richard. Sooner than a hundred years.
Camille just about beat my brains out.
It gets you quicker.
Yeah.
What do we do?
But there are stuff, like, we can work on our sign ordinance to make signs more visually appealing and not so intense. Like, there are things we can do on the side.
Well, I agree.
That's true.
And maybe we're.
It's been generally.
It's back.
Majority of Fifth South. So that language says what we want that to look like in the future.
Which is a great way to achieve it. Usually they don't want anything to do with any new mine. Here, they own it from sidewalk to sidewalk.
But does UDOT.
It's easy to blame UDOT, but you know.
It doesn't, UDOT isn't the whole 500 South. Doesn't it only go to Second West?
It does.
So from Second West, it's no longer UDOT.
Correct.
That's us.
Does it go further east than that?
It goes from Fifth South to Second West, South, not North.
So that's a lot. It's us that we could do.
How do you make it happen?
Yeah.
I, I have a thought. And I.
Please.
I asked this question, Francisco, but I don't, does Bountiful have an employee that their job is based on economic development? Like, they go and recruit developers to come to the city to capture our vision?
Yes. I am that employee.
I think we need a second person.
With two hats.
I, I think we may need one person that's just focused on outreach to developers to try to bring them in to capture really what we're looking for. Because to your point, how do you get that? You have to have one person that's a driver of this is our vision of the city. And we would love you to look at this property here, this property. And we think you would be fantastic to bring this type of person here, or this type of restaurant here.
Yeah. I have heard the same, I have heard that same comment from half a dozen people.
Well, we get, we get solicited by other cities. Like, I.
I was going to ask you.
I get people taking me golfing all the time. And Francisco has never taken me golfing.
That's what it's all about, isn't it?
It was, I had a call today, hey, come golf in the golf course, let's go play.
That is true.
But it's true. There's that tap on the shoulder that you wouldn't have thought of going to Bountiful. But if they say, hey, what's, consider us, then you might come.
If we put a red iguana blue on Main Street, it will turn you around.
Or the Trader Joe's.
Trader Joe's.
Trader Joe's.
I, I will say, one of, probably one of the best cities at doing this is West Valley City.
Really?
Yes.
Really?
And they've had a huge shift in some of their development patterns over the next last 20 years. I mean, some of the parts of town, given into West Valley in a while, you'd be surprised by what you see out there today.
Second, second biggest city in the, in the state population-wise.
Yeah.
With major resources to RDAs, not one, but many. Going back to your question, how do you feel real quick about Blake's Ski and Sea Title-owned Hepworth Building? Completely different than all the other development.
It is. It's a Main Street building.
It is a Main Street building because they put the parking in the back.
Yeah.
How did that community?
Do we like that?
We love that.
I don't have the history.
Does anyone know how that?
I want that.
It's just the.
Hepworth, I know is.
It's the plan they turned in.
And, and speaking with Michael, Michael, not senior, he says he doesn't like the layout from a practicality point of view. That is currently my favorite building on Fifth South.
A mile. So.
Yeah. So really.
But anyways, would that help answer your question if we started mandating that type of development along 500 South?
It definitely would help.
It would help?
Yeah. I mean, the new bar.
Is there consensus on that?
What's her brother-in-law's business? Is he a dermatologist?
I think it's a broader discussion.
I mean, we've got Bar Dermatology. It's a new building that kind of is the same layout, although the parking's on the side instead of in the back.
That is wide.
Right. I mean, good things could come if we had some standards for that street that mandated better things going forward.
I don't recall in my four years here vacancies about there.
I don't think there have been.
There used to be a sandwich shop there.
Did there really?
Now where the title loan places.
Yeah, we're talking about this one. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We only have about five more minutes before now. You have to break before you're.
I did want to make sure we covered. So we did touch on the north character area a little bit with the hospital area. But the, you know, the intense statement here was the north character area provides a desirable place to live, offering a variety of housing choices that are well-connected to walkable commercial nodes and transit access. Because this is also one of the areas that the future BRT line would go through on North Main Street. And it does have a couple of those nodes, like where the Mandarin is and over at Page's Lane in Maine, as well as, you know, access to the Bountiful City Park and the Recreation Center. And the high school, a lot of different places that you can actually get to pretty easily. It's a fairly well-connected neighborhood compared to everywhere else in Bountiful.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by well-connected? The roads aren't curvy, they're straight?
Well, generally that you have streets that intercept. So you can get from one place, you have multiple routes to get from one place to another. When you get into areas that have steeper topography, obviously that's going to make that harder to happen.
It's a little more like grid. There's sidewalks.
Yeah.
Almost everywhere.
I just want to know, this is my, my neighborhood. And while I agree, I mean, more, more areas recently. Like, Mary, your neighborhood?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would describe it as well-connected, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure what Joe meant to that. So I want to hear.
I think it's incredibly well-connected.
I could never forget, I'm on Fourth East, but then I'm not on Fourth East, but then I'm back on Fourth East.
It's a little, it's a little small, yeah.
Fourth East is a.
Okay, guys, any last comments on this, on characters?
Yes, generally this area between Bountiful Boulevard and Davis Boulevard. And how this one, the intense statement says the east character area provides a transition from the low-intensity uses in the foothills to the rest of the city with housing options, parks, and natural areas.
Those are the different areas.
Yeah, I mean, I know we talked about this very early on in some of these joint meetings. You know, whether you divide this area on Davis or on Orchard, it, to me, that our, it is weird that our giant banana slug is in two different character areas.
In all honesty, I feel like living here, it is more divided on 1800. It, that's just me.
North and south of 1800.
It, to me, this is a northwest, or north, or east-west division.
Why did, why did we consolidate it?
I don't know. I don't know.
Joe, I think we consolidated, could have been based on you guys' request, that we had too many?
I'm gonna make a good mistake. I don't remember the rationale.
I, I think, yeah, they were saying that generally, you know, like, the development use. Between Davis and Bountiful Boulevard is pretty similar across the board. So, let's just make that one character area and say, you know, this is generally what we're gonna be seeing in that neck of the woods.
In the, in the area that's still in the same light yellow, that goes from the southern end of the city to the northern boundary of the city, like, that's a ton of area.
Yeah.
It's honestly is described by the, that character area better.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, and I know that we, we do talk a little bit about the transition from those neighborhood residential areas to the neighborhood mixed residential. A lot of that has to do with, you know, street connectivity, access to, you know, better transportation utilities and things. And so, that's generally where we're seeing those transitions start to happen. As you get closer to those corridors that are busier and better connected, that's where you're gonna see a little more intensity when it comes to those kind of uses.
You know what's really interesting about this though? Because the way that we've set up these character areas, you've got the defining place of the neighborhood residential here. And that's like, all of this is either that or parks or neighborhood, the little pocket in neighborhood mixed residential. But we have foothill residential, it's also like a supporting place type in this area. It's almost like what you could do is go back to our, our neighborhood residential and lower the densification of that a bit. With the argument that somebody could come to the east character area and say, hey, look, I'm right on the edge of what could be neighborhood mixed residential and make a good argument that that's what it should be. And then that's how that particular area kind of becomes our dense. So, I, I think there's an argument to go back to the very first long debate we had and think about that neighborhood residential maybe not being the fourplexes in the multifamily, but actually just being a little bit lower density, lower density in this place.
Do you mean make smaller lots?
Was that roughly?
No, well, I think that was bonded on house. So, are you saying, you would say.
What I'm saying is that.
Lot size is smaller, so the house, so they're not duplexes or triplexes, but they're smaller lots and maybe a smaller housing product?
Not necessarily. I, I guess what I was giving that is that. This area includes like the ability to put in other, like foothill residential is not on this map at all, right? But you could go to the boundary with the foothill zone and say, hey, look, I'm on the, I'm on the west side of Bountiful Boulevard, but foothill residential makes so much more sense here, and that's what I want. And there's this change that creates that ability to do that, right? So, I don't know. I don't know that we need to have such high density in our neighborhood residential. In other words, I don't know that we need to have lot sizes, I don't know that we need to have fourplexes, I don't know. That we need, we could, we could keep neighborhood residential at a lower density and be very intentional about it.
In the east character area?
Or throughout. But if you're in one of the other character areas and you're right on the boundary between neighborhood mixed residential, as we defined on the map, and neighborhood residential, you can, you can make the argument.
Growth.
Yeah. And then, and then we get a chance to look at and say, is this scale appropriate?
So, to that point, Lynn, I thought that it, that the document spends, the feel of it to me was communicating that we have a lot more undeveloped property still to go and that changing lot sizes is gonna make any difference at all. And it's not. I mean, the way we are right now, focusing on the right kind of redevelopment or infill development is, I think, where our, our greatest gains are going to come from. But lot sizes mean nothing to us right now. Density of existing or future use is where it's at. Yeah.
Apart from if we were currently R4 everywhere and also R8, everybody could cut everything in half.
Sure, but, you know, look at the lots on the hills. There's not enough frontage for another driveway. We'd be putting one house behind another.
Fly lots.
Yeah.
Well, I know at that point, in the interest of time, we're. Yeah, almost. I just wanted to make sure we quickly showed. So, the foothill character area, the intent statement here was that the, you know, it offers access to natural areas and residential options while providing a gentle transition from the mountainside to the city. So, that is the intent of this kind of transition district. And then, the final one was the South District area, which is a diverse area. This one provides residents with desirable residential housing and limited rental options and serves as the southern gateway into Bountiful. So, that's what we have. Are there any major points that we needed to discuss on either of these?
Any last comments?
Yes, sorry, me. This is, I know it's already been said, but I have to reiterate. I strongly, with five exclamation marks, Richard's last comment, 500 South is our only community commercial zone. And it goes right up through the heart of our city. And I don't see any of this like character visioning, anything in here that will really address that. I know I talked about it when, in my personal interview. I went to, everything I went to, I always was saying, 500 South, 500 South. I don't think I'm the only one because I'm just not that original or creative. And so, I think a lot of people feel this way. And so, I really hope that we'll see something before the end document that gives us some, something to, you know, consider.
Not just downtown.
And without. 500 South. And without, we're done, but thank you, everyone.